To order, and first thing on our agenda tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. So all of those that are able to stand, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you very much. Our first matter on the agenda this evening is any resident's comments. Any residents that have something to bring before the council tonight now would need a time. If you please limit your comments to five minutes or less, we would appreciate it. Are there any comments that any of the residents had to bring before the town? Seeing none, next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the May twelfth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review those minutes as they were provided to us? Okay, are there any comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May twelfth, twenty twenty-five meeting as presented. It's been moved by Cole, seconded by Greg. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, the same sign. Okay, before we get any further, I did forget one thing. This is the first meeting that we will, by state statute, be required to livestream. And our livestream is not up this evening, so we are going to record this and we will upload this meeting tonight after the meeting. From here forward, they will be livestreamed on YouTube. That being said, my name is Walter Frye, for I'm on the town council. To my left is Greg Jacoby, Zach Gordon, Craig Hughes, and yeah, Cole, Mark, excuse me. We have with us Clerk Treasurer John Dillon. We have David Gordon with Crossroads Engineering, who is the town engineer. And we have our Mr. Russo, who is our town marshal. Okay, thank you, should have done that originally. Cole, it was there, I just didn't pull it out. So next on the agenda is the Clerk Treasurer Report, John.
Thank you, Mr. President. You all have been provided with Mr. Higgins, the claims that are up for vote. So I'd ask you to take action on that to start.
Okay, so the approval of the claims and warrants. Bear with me one second. The claims and warrants for the town of Meridian Hills. Oh, I know that's nothing, that's the report fund, Town Meridian Hills Report Fund. Am I getting close, Jim?
Well, it's been just a single sheet of paper.
Yeah. Thank you. Yes, I have, thank you, sorry for the inconvenience. They represent the account voucher claims in the amount of eighty-one thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars and twelve cents. I would entertain a motion to accept those. So it's been moved, is there a second? Moved in second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Greg.
Mr. President, then you can report the acceptance of the April, May, and June twenty twenty-five financial packets, which was provided to you in Exhibit A in all four numbers, Jim.
Right, and see the-
We're just gonna go ahead and vote on April and May.
April and May?
Yes.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion, you see as Exhibit A, I would entertain a motion to accept the town financial reports as presented in Exhibit A. It's been moved by Greg, is there a second? Seconded by Greg, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, the same sign. Greg.
Yes, Mr. President, it's approved of the April and May bank reconciliation statements, reconciliation statements, Exhibit B.
Seeing that, thank you. There, in front of you are Exhibit B, the bank reconciliations for April and May. I would entertain a motion to approve those. It's been so moved by Mr. Hughes, Cole second. Cole, thanks, sorry. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Perfect.
Mr. President, all in need now is acceptance of the updated cash flow documents as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five.
And that amount is?
What's it, not just the cash flow?
Just the cash flow, statement, not just the total amount.
Okay, so there is a statement approving the funds that we have as a town, correct?
Correct.
Would entertain a motion to approve as presented. Been moved, seconded? Seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Greg.
Mr. Higgins, will walk us through the dates and process for the twenty twenty-six budget, Jim.
So we have two meetings coming up for the budget. The first will be the introduction and the public hearing. That will be at your next regular meeting on September the eighth. Then we'll have a special meeting the second Monday in October for the adoption of the budget. So that that takes place prior to the November first deadline. So similar to what we've done in prior years, a regular meeting in September, special meeting in October. And I should have eliminated budget information circulated to you sometime in mid-August.
So we'll be introduced at the regular meeting in September and we'll have a special meeting the second Monday in October, which I believe is October the twelfth, for the approval.
Correct.
Okay.
Keep rolling, Jim, let's talk about Senate rule act number one.
So the session's been done now for three months. And those of us that have been working in finance for a while are still trying to figure out all the nuances that are there. Here are the two things that I could tell you. One, there is substantial property tax relief, which means you will have a budget reduction over the next six years of revenue that will come from, to the town from property taxes. That is a given. How much, we can't ascertain at this point in time. But I would move towards maybe a ten percent revenue drop in property taxes over the next six years. The other thing that will happen is in twenty twenty-eight, you will lose all of your local income taxes that now exist. Which is about twenty thousand dollars on the general fund side that is part of property tax relief that's granted by the county. And about seventy thousand dollars in public safety lit, which we use to fund salaries for police officers. The legislation allows for local income taxes to be adopted, but because of the size of the town, you can't take that opportunity on your own. So you would have to petition the city-county council to adopt an income tax on your behalf. And those rules, I think, are still fluid, because I would imagine in the next session we're going to see changes. Because the public safety lit that was eliminated is being replaced by a special public safety lit, but only for fire EMS services, they kind of left police out of the equation. Which I'm not sure if that was an oversight or a slight. But I've been told that that's going to be addressed in the upcoming legislative session. So again, we won't see those changes until twenty twenty-eight. So it'll be the twenty twenty-seven budget that will address that. So we've got a little bit of time before those take place. But pay attention, because it will be a wild ride for the next couple of years.
So that's about twenty percent of our budget?
It could be as much as twenty percent, but it is substantial as it relates to funding public safety. Right, I mean, that loss of seventy thousand dollars is the large part of what pays the officer salaries for the officers that you have. And again, you can petition, you can petition the county for that, but it's going to be then relied upon the county to take that step.
Okay. Any questions? I don't know that we do anything but sit.
I think we have to wait until twenty twenty-seven to see what the final rules are. Again, if you have a population greater than thirty-five hundred, right, or greater than five thousand, greater than five thousand, you can make that determination on your own, but you can't. So the excluded cities, right, Southport, Lawrence, Beach Grove, Speedway, all can make that determination on their own.
Based on their population?
Based on their population. It's all the other communities that the county's got to be willing to take that first step and make that relief possible.
Any other questions?
It's so early, let's just thought of, let's ride this out, see how the numbers shake out, and then we'll know which way to go or not.
Isn't there another financial session in twenty-seven?
There is another session in twenty-six, and so I believe that in that short session, you'll see some of these things get addressed.
Addressed.
But addressed, pro or con, good or bad, is a whole other. There are people that didn't like what happened, and there are people that think it didn't go far enough. So I think there's, it will be a contentious short session.
You're correct in that the next financial session is twenty-seven, but there's so much people raising issues that they're going to address them in twenty-six.
Okay.
But short sessions are getting done.
The thing that will make the income tax really interesting is that vote that has to take place in twenty twenty-seven is going into an election year. So you're going to have people voting for income tax increases in October, September, October of twenty twenty-seven, prior to the election in November. Which is the first kind of local government, what did you do to us here? Because you're forcing us to make this decision going into a primary, to a general election. So, yeah, again, a wild ride is going to be anticipated.
Which we will all be up for that.
And then-
In the end, that same year, our term ends, and those that are choosing to continue on and run for the next, that we will be in that. Our terms are all the same time, I thought you said somehow staggered. They're all the same. Thanks, Jim, any other questions for Jim? Okay, seeing that, John, insurance renewed?
Yes, we renewed our insurance July first, our broker is on vacation, so he will be here for a full presentation at the September eighth meeting, we haven't said that. Last year, our premium for July first, twenty-four to July first of twenty-five was nine thousand fifty-six dollars. We renewed this year's July first, twenty twenty-five, which grows till July first of twenty twenty-six, at ten thousand two sixty-one. Pressure was on the excess cover above a package, which we go up to six million dollars on excess liability in D and O. I've also, and to members of the board, Mr. President, I've asked them to cover what Walter and I refer to as our monument signs, which are located around the town. Those were excluded under our present policy. I want them covered in the event that an automobile hits one of them. And I think, Walter, we think it's what, twenty grand to replace it?
With last, it was nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars, and we did the one on Seventy-first Street, where Illinois Dad ends to Seventy-first and Meridian Hills Boulevard.
So if a truck hits it and runs, or if a truck hits it and then that coverage, for three hundred fifty dollars, we can give all our monument signs covered in case something happens. So I thought it was worth getting it done. And we'll have those signs scheduled. So they're right on our policy, it says Eightieth and Meridian, it says Sixty-fourth and Springville, it says, you know, Sixty-fourth and Meridian.
It seems like one of these had a barrier to it. Some years, three.
And that one's in a pretty precarious spot, I mean, it's probably going to get demolished every ten years.
Yeah, the one in Eightieth and Meridian, it's likely to get hit, but the one of Seventy-fifth or Seventy-first Street, it could touch on.
Great, thanks, John.
You give it up, Mr. President?
Great. Any other questions for our Clerk Treasurer, Mr. Dillon? Okay, seeing none, our town marshals report, Mike?
Evening, Mr. President, just a couple of things for you. Sorry for my tactical gear, we've been in a week long training, it started today, so we're all doing school tactical work and things like that. I just wanted to, and oh, just comment on Mr. Dillon and Mr. Higgins' developments. I suspect that cut in law enforcement salary for twenty twenty-eight, there'll be a lot of small towns that'll really be affected by that. So the legislature will certainly hear from a lot of the small towns. I hear some of that already, and some of the law enforcement service, that there's a lot of concern, so we'll see.
Yeah, I don't think that small towns are all bad, it's a good when they do.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have some options that we've discussed here before. As I've mentioned to this council in previous, there could be a possibility that you contract for services at a lesser rate with either the city or Marion County Sheriff or something like that. So when that time comes, we'll see, but I think that there'll be a loud voice. As Mr. Dillon said, it'll be an interesting general assembly. I wanted to make you aware that, just to tell you the sort of things we run into sometimes in Meridian Hills. And this didn't happen in Meridian Hills, but it gives you kind of the view of the quality of the people that work here. On Friday night, Rick Batza was patrolling down the Wellington area, there's a run put out in the Holiday Park on a man with a gun, and potentially an attempt suicide, and Rick was really close, and as he should have responded into the park on that, and confronted the person who was armed with a weapon and trying to kill himself. And Rick, based upon his training and experience, was able to talk that person to surrender the firearm, at which time IMPD arrived, and they were able to get that person to distress someone. So probably saved that guy's life. He had called his son on the phone to tell him he was going to end his life, and his son called him. So, you know, could someone else have done that? Probably, but Rick's of the style and has the training that he was able to approach the situation and deal with that. So I'm pretty proud of Rick, and I want you to know that. So that's all I have.
Any questions? And I'll go on record, you know how much I appreciate the work that you and officers do. It's a thankless job, and we are definitely making the town a better place for all of us.
Thank you.
Okay, next, under new business, our town engineer, David Gordon with Crossroads Engineering. David, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. President. So first on the agenda, we have two resurfacing contracts, both from community crossings. The first one is completed, it's been done for about a week. The second one actually started today. All of those filled today, and they'll start paving tomorrow. We should have that one completed inside of this first week, so by Friday, we should be completely wrapped up. So that would round out the resurfacing for this current year. Funding applications for any, for INFP, the twenty twenty-four INFP application, still no agreement. Twenty twenty-five, which we submitted in February, is no agreement. I reached out to the city last week, they informed me that they are currently working on those agreements, and they're actually going to combine both of those into one agreement. So those, I would anticipate incoming shortly. Other communities we're involved in, the city has been reaching out to them to schedule meetings, so I think that they are actually making so much progress thus far. Twenty twenty-five, Community Crossings, second call for projects is still on hold by the state. Usually they have one at the beginning of the year and one mid-year. We were going to apply for the second one, but it's on hold indefinitely until they figure out more details of House Bill fourteen sixty-one. Um, existing infrastructure, uh, Seventy Fifth Street Speed Limit sign is having a little bit of diverting construction. Uh, they do have a bit of a backlog, uh, and so I recognize that, that they are, we're in the material. Once that is arrives, they're going to be installing the additional sub level signage on Seventy Fifth Street. Uh, I'm sure most of you have noticed and are probably very thrilled that the Pendleton Williams Creek is completed. I believe the barricades are actually down. Um, so there was some from our resurfacing contract, they left a little bit of res residue material on the deck. They're going to be cleaning that out if they have not already done so. That's a punch list item that I've only been accounted with two. Uh, Seventy Fifth Street sidewalks from Pendleton Washington Boulevard, uh, topo survey has been completed. Uh, provided that to you, Walter, along with an exhibit for any property owners. Um, and then I believe uh Deputy Sheriff Batza had requested or inquired to the speed limit sign on Pennsylvania. So I provided that cost to the council. That's something that we still, or if you would like to pursue, um, just as you're doing tonight, I can start moving forward, uh, acquiring that through diverting construction. Um, small ancillary stuff, we have C E G water and gas installed, uh, thirty five West Seventy Second Street uh for the uh Meridian Point development over in that area. Meridian, Meridian Boulevard, Meridian Hills Boulevard and Seventy Second. Uh, Sir, I was out, witnessed uh the uh roadway cut that was there. They're going to restore that. I do recommend that in the future on that development stuff, we add that to a resurfacing list. Uh, MetroNet is also doing some work over there, and that C E G had a few um dirt cuts, so nothing that impacted the pavement, but it wasn't to the right way at those three uh mentioned locations. So that is all that I have in my report. That's the rest of your questions.
There is a very large repair going on right now at Seventy Third and Meridian Street. Uh, I'm not sure exactly what it is, but it's been open now the street uh for probably, Meridian Street has been reduced to one lane for probably uh a week at this point. It's very deep. Uh, they're going down into it. I'm not sure exactly what they're doing, but I have a feeling it has to do with some of the drainage underneath Meridian Street, but uh, I haven't pulled over and asked them, but they are, there's a significant project with citizens going on there. I also noticed uh last week that the water service on Illinois Street immediately north of Seventy Fifth in front of the Nagum's home. There's one of the dark brown, brown, where they go down and turn the water off. It's leaking and
Got it.
Constantly leaking at this point. So my guess is there's something broken down there as well. We I don't, I, we might call them and ask C E G.
Absolutely happy to look into that. Yeah, we uh, which street was actually on, we noticed Friday while we were measuring up for the construction work that was taking place today. So one of the resurfacing uh street segments, we noticed a sinkhole in the road. Uh, I was able to notify C E G and they got out there within less than twenty four hours and repaired that. So it was not to interfere with the rest of our resurfacing. So what they found was there was a uh in the stormwater uh infrastructure, there was a hole that was actually sucking in material. So they city authorized that to repair it. So that was all taken care of by the city. Um, and obviously fixed or prevented any uh any type of damage to the new road limits. We get that done. Now we have to look into those and report back. Absolutely.
Any other questions for David?
Yeah, um, one is, what was the cost to repair the radar sign in Pennsylvania's region?
Between material and installation, I think it was around ten thousand dollars. Now, and those were quotes that we got in twenty twenty four, so it's, that is the cost.
Well, I think, I think we got a, we got a newly repaid street flat. People walk on that all the time. I think speed is going to go way up. You know, I would think we should entertain getting that sign reinstalled and repaired just to try to slow the speeds down. We're going to have two problems out of Seventy Fifth that I think those are going to go, going north. So one of the other councils is thinking about that.
So I will tell you.
I don't know.
So I will tell you that I did some research. I came across one of the flashing red stop signs that John, you and I talked about for Seventy Fifth and Illinois, Seventy Fifth and then. And unfortunately, my phone right now is being used to record us, but I have an email from this company down in Florida that for like a thousand dollars, there that you can do the radar speed and you can then program what you wanted to say in that uh slowdown, tell you how fast you're going. That you can now, I think they're making great technological advances with these. So uh after this meeting, we can open that email and I'll show you what we have and I'll share that with David.
So that that would be um, would replace the radar speed sign?
No, that is, I thought the incidence of people running Pennsylvania and Illinois, but then the radar sign is like thirty four hundred dollars. A new one was like thirty four hundred.
Oh, it was in ten thousand?
Yeah, so.
I mean, yeah, ten thousand gives me pause, you know, everybody's, you know, for thirty four hundred, if people think it's effective, that's a different conversation. Yeah, so I, you know, there's not, there, at the minimum, there's a nice pole there that really has nothing on it. So we should at least put a like children to play like speed limit sign or something.
Or put this on, put the thirty four hundred dollar radar sign.
Yeah, I'm saying if we don't do that, we should at least take you up to post something. So the question is what?
Well, we have money in the rainy day fund. We have money in certain things that, again, I'm a big fan of the rainy day fund, but I think we ought to use it when we have situations like this where we are trying to protect the pedestrians up here. And that's why we we have the money and so let's um.
I think they are right.
I'm sorry?
I think that it was affecting where it was running.
Yeah, so so I think maybe what we do is uh let's get this information at this meeting and um maybe take it up in the September meeting, David, look at it and have David look at it, it's an idea, and be ready to move forward. The other thought that I have in that is I would entertain a motion to approve spending up to seventy five hundred dollars on a conglomerate of signs that we might have David suggest to us if in fact these numbers are there. And that way we don't have to wait till September to have that work done, if that would be the pleasure of the, of the uh.
I like to look at that because the flashing stop signs, uh, people are saying are pretty effective.
Yeah, I, I had an experience with that for the first time over the weekend. There's an intersection in my hometown in Illinois that's always been two way, now it's four way. Well, the 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 two new ways, it's the flasher. I mean, it gets your attention, right? I mean, our theory has been a seventy fifth and Pennant is that it's not that people see the see the stop signs, that they're just simply disregarding it. You know, but if if the price is coming down, is it worth doing something rather than doing nothing, right? I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be a pretty rainy day when somebody about gets hit there, you know.
There have been accidents.
Right, and there's accidents, so.
So so I would, sorry, just.
Real quick, I've got that flash sign. I know there's been concern about like, would homeowners have an issue that are located right there? It didn't strike me as so bright. I mean, I didn't see it at night, but like, it didn't seem like, you know, it's not like a, you know, super distracting, you know, thing. I don't think, you know, we're going to get complaints from people on those corners, but, you know.
Seems like people, those are the most interested in slowing that first stop there.
Yeah.
So do you think that seventy five hundred dollars would cover both the speed and that intersection?
So that those are separate. I read it very quickly. I don't know. What I'm trying to do is at a minimum, let's get the speed back up to that, and then if we can understand what those, truthfully, the red flashes, I don't think need to be on the north and south on Pennsylvania as much as they need to be on the east and west on Seventy Fifth. So if I'm trying to err to the high side by saying seventy five hundred, not to exceed seventy five hundred, and then we can allow David to work his magic and see how much we can get and get as much as we can. And if we didn't identify we need more, we can approve that in the September meeting.
So is that, we need to, someone needs to make that motion.
Right.
All right, I move that we, we set aside eight thousand dollars.
Up to?
Up to eight thousand dollars to install flashing stop signs on the east and west side of Seventy Fifth Street and Pennsylvania. And that we research and install the new radar sign on Pennsylvania on the post that we already have.
And Illinois and Seventy Fifth.
Oh, and Illinois and Seventy Fifth.
Yeah, we have the same issue at Illinois and Seventy Fifth with the school there. No, that's not the speed there. That's the flashing, the flashing. Just the two. So we would get a, my take, we would get four of them, two in each one of those intersections.
That was the fault. Okay, I got it. So there was, there was two intersections on the east and west side. And then the thirty five million, oh, we're speeding sign going up in Pennsylvania. Because people are going to start resisting Pennsylvania.
Okay, so has been made, a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same side? Okay, great.
My, my second question was, did the city give you, ever give you a reason why they didn't build a sidewalk on the Pennsylvania Street Bridge coming up the hill?
Uh, they said it was in the plans, it's something, and it wasn't. I just, I always saw it construction.
It should be there. Cause the plan, my God, the plan, it was in the front.
Yeah, well, it was, it was not in the plan. It had, and.
It was at one point, you paid down, I think at Saks request.
I prepared that for us. I, in fact, I asked the clients, they do it, they put that down.
Yeah, I was on the way, I told them. I mean, at one point there was a discussion, you guys didn't want it there.
We negotiated and I was like, it's for the best for public safety, so. Actually hoping it was going in.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, the final plan said to not have the sidewalk in there. It was graded, but there was no sidewalk in it.
Okay.
Don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Mr. President, I think it um would be great for the record if you could comment on all the new paving projects that Town of Meridian Hills have done and how they have dovetailed with the worship towns of City of Indianapolis playing well. I I think it's pretty outstanding. And just as we were going off the top of our heads, Eighty Sixth Street paved, Spring Mill paved, Meridian paved, Pennsylvania paved, College paved. Now we're getting the little side areas. So the infrastructure on the streets is very updated and very good shape. And and I just congratulate the board for getting that done. Every other community in this state would like to have that uh situation. So I just think that's fantastic that the infrastructure is being addressed. Just a couple of comments.
Well, great job. Crossroads, who keeps an inventory of our roads, those that are most in need. And I think the community crossings that we've been uh now involved with for either eight or nine years, we have upgraded the infrastructure because that money's not always promised to be there. And keeping on top of that, I think, has been a thing that this council has been very involved with and done a great job with.
And there has been discussions, why didn't we use some of those funds for additional sidewalks? Well, you can't mix and match the federal funds. You've got to use it for the street, paving, not for sidewalks. So uh, wasn't really, it wasn't a, a choice that you could be made, so.
Also, I think people uh don't understand how expensive sidewalk construction is.
Right. And even if it's possible, when you do that.
Yeah, you, you're pointing out, it's, it's an extremely expensive endeavor as we now all know, so.
Yeah, yeah. Congratulations to the board. I, I think it's great.
Just thank you.
Sure. On the sidewalk, the survey is complete.
Yes.
Uh, I believe that, when you talk about the homeowners, they're just saying, where would it be? So is there a way to, I know it's not designed, but we can just dot on there where the, with, just dot on, we think it's going to be this location, so so I should go meet with those homeowners and say, here's the survey, it's going to be right this way.
Yeah, we've got it. If I share the wall.
He just, I just got that last week.
Yep.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
And the first person that I've worked with is that corner property owner, and uh I will endeavor to meet with her as quickly as possible, whether or not her setback is not going to change based upon the additional right of way. We still measure from the edge of pavement for that. Any other questions for our town engineer? Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Um, reviews, I assume that means people looking for uh work on their homes and things to add to their residential standard. The only thing I can say, I had a meeting this morning with the sakers who are looking to add on to their uh residence, uh, which sits on the southwest corner of Pennsylvania and uh Williams Creek Boulevard, I think it is. Um, and and uh they want to put a, an addition on to their house that will, that will uh extend in, I believe, into the front yard right of way, uh, or setback. And uh, we had a discussion. It's very early on, but uh they called. I had that meeting this morning, so. That's it from, is there any other new business that anybody wants to bring before the?
Yeah, yes. Those forms, uh, and that board that's, that law is now effective July first. Legislature just introduced it. Kind of similar to this streaming bill. Um, if you are a elected official and receiving compensation, and I think you all are over the level that you're in the books to receive, you have to file that form as a position of candidacy. You don't have to open a, an account at a bank to raise money, but you have to have that form filed with the state of Indiana. And it was due July first. I'm assuming that everybody's just now finding out about this, but you've got to go ahead and fill it out, send it in, name your campaign. You can be the treasurer and the chairman of your own campaign to make it easy. Uh, and just email it in, and that way you're not on a list of not having. I just thought I'd throw it to you in case you didn't know that.
Yes. Do you have a note this holds over? We've done this previously, or this has to be done every year?
I would do it again because of the fact that this, the legislation is different effective July first. I don't have a, I don't know the answer to that, but I would, I would, I would just do it. It takes you all five minutes.
John, is this in blue here? Is that the email address?
It is.
I would also tell you that uh from past experience, if they're asking for a party, we have all run in the past as independents because at some point in the past, we had Republican, Democratic, and when someone then left their position, it was up to that political party to replace them, which was uh an extended period of time. It was not necessarily uh a great thing for the town. And so I would encourage everybody, if they can and are willing to, make sure that if there's a spot in here, I have a review to get for independent, that allows us to then uh deal within those that are within the town, so we don't have either a Republican or Democratic party naming who are next. People are going to have work on the, on the town. Okay, that's it. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Certainly.
And move second. All in favor indicate by saying aye, aye, pose. Thanks.